Are you going to be gone the 25th?
Kind of have to.
You're an alternate, so me too. Do you want to ride or do you need a ride?
I'm fine.
Okay, I was gonna say carpool rather than... I think I'm gonna go up there early and hang around and see what's going on.
Sure.
It's not gonna be caucus meetings out there, just...
I hope not.
Welcome to Lenexa. My name's Andy Huckaba. I am a councilman in Lenexa, and it's my honor today to introduce our congressman and friend Kevin Yoder. Before I do that, I want to recognize one other elected official I know of in the audience, and that's my wardmate Manny Stupi, who is also a councilperson. Manny, wait here again. So if you meant to be at a town hall meeting, Al Frisbee. There we go, sorry, Al. If you meant to be at Congressman Yoder's town hall meeting, well, you're in the right place. And if you didn't mean to be here, then hang around, it could be a lot of fun. Kevin Yoder was elected first in 2002 to the Kansas House of Representatives. He served as the Chair of the House Appropriations Committee there. In 2010, Congressman Yoder, or Kevin, was elected to the US House of Representatives, and in January of 2011, started to serve there. He serves on the following committees: the House Appropriations Committee, the Commerce, Justice, and Science Subcommittee, the Financial Services Subcommittee, and the Military Construction and Veterans Affairs Subcommittee. He's been at the forefront of reducing government spending, working on the debt ceiling, and efforts to protect the troops who pay the troops pay in the event of a shutdown. The congressman has been constantly in the district since taking office in January, taking part in town hall meetings and picnics and parades, major announcements, and in general, just staying in touch with his constituents. If you would join me, please stand for the National Department of Republicans. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I might ask Father Mike.
Good morning. Let us pause for a moment and recognize the presence of God. Almighty God, may I ask your blessings upon us. Send us your spirit of wisdom, your spirit of truth, of knowledge, to guide us, to guide Congressman Yoder and all leaders of government. Help us to follow you always, for you are Lord forever and ever. Amen.
So welcome Congressman Yoder.
Well, thank you, Councilman, and thanks to the City of Lenexa, Lenexa Chamber, and folks that helped us put this on. This is part of our continuing series of town hall meetings we're doing around the district. This is our first one in Lenexa, so I appreciate everybody coming out this morning. And it's a great opportunity for us to have a dialogue where we can discuss issues facing our country. Certainly, there are a variety of very heartfelt, intelligent opinions on issues such as job creation and spending. And so this is an opportunity for me to share some of the things we're doing in Washington, share my perspective on things, and then here, have a good dialogue about your perspective and where we might agree and where there might be disagreements. And so I think it's a very healthy part of the democratic process, and I'm doing a lot of these because I really enjoy the chance to meet and visit constituents in the district. And so thank you all so much for being here. I'm glad to be home, glad to be back in the district. We were, it's a long weeks, obviously, in Washington, a lot going on. And we were last night coming back on the plane. I sat in a tarmac for about two or three hours waiting to take off. So got home late last night, but happy to be back in the district today and have a series of events around the district. I was in Chomi this morning, I'll be in Kansas City, Kansas this afternoon and around the district. So certainly, having a lot going on, I appreciate the chance to be here today. Let me give you just some basic background information on the office for those of you who need constituent services. As you know, we have an office here. We just opened up a new district office at 79th and Metcalf in downtown Oldham Park. It's about a block west of Metcalf there and 79th, maybe over by the Papa Quino's, for people to know where that is in the community. So we've got an office there that's very accessible and open, and I encourage you to come by if you have ideas you'd like to share with us, questions, and you need help. I did want to recognize my district representative Molly Hayes, who's here. And Molly is here for your questions. We also have Shane in the back, Shane Worthing, who can answer your questions if you have help. And certainly, we have some other staff members here as well, and certainly, after the meeting, if you need things. Let me just give you an idea of what the office staff does beyond the votes we're doing in Washington and the services we try to provide for constituents here in the district. Certainly, we deal with passport requests. We've had folks down to 48 hours before they're supposed to leave on that international trip and their passport hasn't arrived yet. And so we help people out with simple things like that, all the way to veterans' benefits issues. Folks who haven't gotten their benefits. We had an issue recently with lost Purple Heart. We deal with veterans' medals and different things. And so we certainly provide a whole variety of services, social security assistance, whatever it might be. And so I encourage you to use our office in that regard, and they're here to serve. We've received and responded to about 32,000 pieces of mail or email so far since we were sworn in in office in January. So about six months, 32,000 pieces. So the staff works very hard, work hard together to make sure that we get responsive back, and happy to continue to do that. On the floor, we've taken several hundred recorded votes. We've been in session, I think, we were sworn in on January 5th, so we're now just a little bit over into the sixth month here, serving in office. And it's been my true honor and pleasure to have the chance to represent this community. I really believe Kansas, I was born and raised here, grew up, actually, in Kansas, grew up in rural Kansas, in a little town called Yoder, Kansas. Attended Hutchinson Public Schools, the University of Kansas for undergrad and law school, where I'm actually now the honor of representing Lawrence and KU's campus again as a congressman. And so the district's very diverse, a lot of intelligent folks, a lot of great businesses. And so I feel a real honor to represent the third district of Kansas, and I appreciate the chance that you all allowed me to be your voice and vote in Washington DC. And we know we have some tough issues this country's facing. We focus a lot of our time in Washington on job creation. Both parties are really, we're really trying to focus on what we can do to get the economy going again, get jobs created in this country. We know the statistics are dismal. We have, last month, we learned that the unemployment rate is at 9.1% and moved back up again. And so we've got about 9% unemployment now for over 24 months. It's the longest period of unemployment this high since the Great Depression. We created, the country created 53,000 jobs in the month of May, but we need about 150,000 jobs just to keep up with the population growth. So creating nearly 53,000, we actually go down. And that's why we, 53,000 new jobs, but yet unemployment went up a few points, a few tenths of a point. So we constantly need to be adding jobs just to keep up. There are about 13 million Americans looking for work in the country. And so we know the issue that's foremost on a lot of folks' minds is, and unemployment's lower in Kansas. It's lower in lots of counties, it's around 6%. And so, but it's still a big factor for a lot of us. I've talked to a lot of small business owners who, they may be employed, but they're not taking a paycheck. Or they may have, you know, have folks that have had to take salary cuts, or they're underemployed. There's a whole host of challenges that go along with this struggling economy. It also has an impact on state, local, and federal budgets. We've seen the challenges at the state level, we've seen the challenges at the local level, as state and local governments have to deal with less folks working, meaning less tax revenue comes in. We deal with that in Washington as well. And so we know that a strong economy, that job creation created in this country is key to a lot of the issues we're facing. And the debate's pretty intense in Washington over what we need to do. We know that back in February of 2009, Congress passed, and the President signed, a stimulus bill that spent about $800 billion on a variety of projects across the country. A lot of it went to state governments, so they can continue to employ folks. And the jury's stoners on what the impact of that's going to be. And economists disagree, Americans disagree, and sure, people in this room disagree. What we do know is that the projections at the time that bill passed was that we would have 6.8% unemployment at this point. That just when you go out and spend that much money, you're gonna hire people, and therefore, you're gonna reduce unemployment. The idea is, it's a snowball effect, that if we just spend money, and not necessarily where we spend it, but just by spending money, putting it in the hands of people, they'll buy things, and therefore, that'll turn the economy. And so far, that has not been the cure to the economy that folks in Washington believed it would be. A lot of Americans probably believe that a big portion of that money went to infrastructure, whereas about 10%, less of the money actually went to infrastructure and those sorts of things. And so I think there's a lot of frustration that the policies that have come out of Washington for both parties over the years haven't necessarily led to the best economic gain and growth that we could have in this country. So I think we need to shift our focus, and we're trying to shift our focus in Washington to get the entire town to focus more on job creation in the private sector. And what we can do to get small businesses and entrepreneurs creating jobs. We know that small businesses create two out of every three jobs in this country. We know that new job, new business creation is a low point. It's the lowest it's been since 1994, that new business is being created in this country. And so we wanted to figure out what we can do to help entrepreneurs and small business owners create jobs. And Washington can either do things like go spend money and borrow money and raise taxes, or they can stop doing things like tax less, spend less, and regulate less. And that's really the debate you have in Washington, the debate we have in this country. One side of the argument is that in order to get out of this economic challenge, we need to spend more, borrow more, tax more, and regulate more. But the reason we are where we are is the government wasn't involved enough in the economy. And there's another side of the argument that says, listen, the government's creating more problems than they're helping. That when they come in and add new regulations, when they come in and spend more money, when they come in and borrow and tax, that that actually just creates more problems. What we need to do is let the free enterprise system work. The belief that the job creation created in this country by hard work and by risk that individuals took, not by waiting for the government to come bail them out or to do something for them. And so that's really the debate. Somewhere in the middle, hopefully, Washington can come together and pass some policies that will help small businesses in our district get people back to work. We know that keeping business taxes down and taxes for individuals in the community puts more money in their pocket, allows them to grow. And raising individual income taxes also raises taxes on small business owners. And so I believe that keeping taxes low in this economic recovery is very important. Keeping regulations down and trying to not destabilize businesses that are having to deal with a flood of new paperwork, things is important, I think. One of the things that we were able to get some bipartisan agreement on is repealing a portion of the healthcare bill already that was passed just last year that required that everyone, every small business in the country that did over $600 in transactions with another small business had to fill out an IRS paperwork, had to fill out a 1099. And this was a part of the healthcare bill that passed last year. And businesses started complaining, saying, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna buy $600 of the paper for a paper company, why do I have to go to the IRS and report a new paperwork for that? This is gonna be a bureaucratic nightmare. It's on the House passed and pushed, and the Senate passed, and the President signed the bill to repeal it. The President's called on going through regulations line by line and trying to figure out how to streamline things. And certainly, the House, they're calling to freeze or slow many of these regulations that are coming down because they're very destabilizing and don't believe that they're good to get us out of this economic recovery. Community banks and lending is a big issue. And this is one that may not be at the forefront of folks that go to work every day. You know, how does the capital move that helps jobs be created? But because of some of the new rules that have come out in response to the challenges on Wall Street, with derivatives and all those issues, many of our community banks are under a whole set of new regulations. And so I talked to local banks, and they say, well, we used to be required to have an 8% capital ratio, but now it's gonna be 10%. What that means is essentially, is they're making us to have more money on hand before they lend. And if you're a bank that can't get new revenue into the bank, you don't have any new investors, essentially means that you can't own as much. You're gonna have to call in some notes. And so when folks, when small business owners' notes are coming due that they used to pay employees to run their operations, they can't always get them renewed, and other banks won't give them as well. And so if you're trying, if you're a developer and you wanna hire people to construct your business or to build new shopping malls, it's just hard to do right now because banks are under a really tight grid and they're unable to lend. And so that's a bottleneck as well, in which we think we could loosen that up a little bit and help the lending process work. I also think trade is a big issue. There's free trade agreements that are outstanding that we'd really like to see get pushed through Congress. One of them is the Panama Trade Agreement, one of them is the Colombian Trade Agreement, and one of them is the South Korean Free Trade Agreement. And what we want to do is be an opportunity where we can sell American goods overseas. Very important for farmers, we want to open up new markets. And so we're really asking the administration folks to be able to push those bills and get them moving. And then energy is an issue. We continue to try to develop a more comprehensive energy policy. Right now, it's very difficult, both for new drilling of oil, natural gas, coal, wind, all those issues. We want to have all the above, energy set of policies. And far too often, Washington gets in the way, drives up energy costs, doesn't secure domestic sources of energy. And so I feel very strongly that we need to explore and utilize domestic sources of energy here in the United States. We need to continue to promote new and innovative ways of energy as well. Certainly, immigration reform is something that Washington needs to continue to focus on. We've got a pretty broken immigration system in this country where you can come into the country illegally fairly easy and stay in the country, receive benefits and services. But if you come to the country illegally, you're at a university, got a visa, your visa's up, you head home. And so we almost take the best of brightest from around the world, educate them, and then send them home, and take folks that come in illegally and let them stay here. And so I think we've got that backwards. And I think there's even some bipartisanship on this. The President mentioned this in the State of the Union, that we've gotta figure out a way to fix and streamline the legal immigration process in which we can bring the best and brightest around the country to the United States and to secure orders and to ensure that when you're coming into this country, you're documented, we know who you are, we know where you are, we know what... We're not having folks just sort of coming in and going as they want. And it would be essentially, I think, better for the economy if we could develop a much stronger immigration system. And then finally, of course, you know, we continue to work on spending issues. And as a member of the Appropriations Committee, this is something I spend a lot of time on. And we know the statistics here as well. We borrow about 42 cents out of every dollar we spend in Washington. The national debt is now at about $14.3 trillion. We borrow about $1.6 trillion this year, which is an all-time high. The last, this is the third year of record highs. And we borrow about $40,000 a second. Which, just to think about that, every second we're sitting here, we're borrowing $40,000 from folks generations from now. Because there aren't plans in Washington from any party that can balance the budget overnight. 42% is just not feasible to make those types of changes overnight. And so the President's budget proposal went to the Senate and was defeated 97 to 0. The Senate has not passed a budget now in 779 days. So it's very hard to have a good appropriations process and a budgeting process with two chambers if everyone's not engaged in a visionary budgeting process. And so we've placed the budget on the table. And we're asking the President to sit down and have him put a budget on the table so we can work together to find ways to preserve programs, but work towards a long-term set of budget stability. And we had a great opportunity a couple of weeks ago to sit down and visit with the President and share our ideas. He shared his ideas. And as productive as many of us hope. I know the President and Speaker are playing golf this weekend. Maybe they'll be able to work something out on the golf course. But we have some serious policy challenges that many of us are worried that relate to this huge set of deficits. And really, the parties need to sit down. You're not, no party's gonna have their way in Washington right now. Republicans aren't going to, the Democrats are going to. And so I'm hoping, hopeful that the talks that Vice President Biden is leading, that both parties are involved in right now, will lead to some sort of longer-term budget resolution. If you're on the right, it's probably not gonna be enough reductions and enough of spending cuts to get the budget back. I don't speak enough. If you're on the left, it may not have enough new revenue, it may not have enough new taxes, and it may be too heavy on the spending cuts. There's gonna be a spot there, we're in the middle, where probably no one's gonna like the result. And sometimes, those are compromises that actually get policy down in Washington and move things down the road. And if it's too lopsided, then it's hard to get anything, anything moving. One of the proposals out there is a sort of this cut cap and balance proposal that we need to cut spending now, put some spending caps in place to stop the growth of government, and then put a balanced budget amendment in place. So that as we get back into this situation going forward, that both parties are constrained under the idea of a balanced budget. And, you know, I was in Topeka for a number of years, certainly in our personal lives and our small businesses. The idea that you can spend as much money as you want, regardless of how much money you have, only exists in one place in this country, and it's in Washington DC. And so it's got out of control. And we have to put some constraints in place so that folks in Washington create a new culture. And the culture they're right now is very much, we spend as much as you want. And we've gotta change that culture, or we're not gonna get anywhere. Appropriations in the House, it's interesting, in Kansas Legislature, we have one bill. So we had one bill we did, everything in one bill. And Congress had 12 separate bills. So each part of the budget has a separate bill that you do. We've done several bills on the floor already. We've done the Homeland Security Bill, that's one of the 12, Military Construction and Veterans. And then this week, we're debating the Agricultural Appropriations Bill. There'll be nine left. The next one's coming up are the Defense Appropriations Bill, an Energy Bill, and then Financial Services, which the two of those are ready to go. And then the Financial Services will be working next week in the White House. So that's kind of the brief update on how things are going. I look forward to a chance to answer your questions, talk about the issues more in depth, take comments, and certainly appreciate all of you coming. I know we have Republicans, Democrats, independents, insurers in the room. And so I hope we have a good opportunity to have everybody, you know, air their thoughts and have a good discussion, and we continue to have a good dialogue in this community. I did also want to recognize my wife, Brooke, who's here this morning. And Brooke, thanks for coming today. And at this time, I'm gonna turn over for questions. What we'll do is just call on folks, and is this our only microphone? It is? So I'll either, I'll probably just call on folks and then I'll repeat the question, if I can hear it, if that'll work. And I know people like to hear the question too, so go ahead and open it up for questions now. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Brooke. How you doing? I say that lovely, I heard both members. You don't say, you've been serving together for a good long time. Questions regarding the issue that seems to be eating up about four of engineers there who are assigned of the various lake systems, the water releases, the resulting flooding, regaining, et cetera. How much of an impact on curing the severance from all the floods and whatnot that all the farms, not only in Kansas, there won't be many in Kansas, but across the area, in terms of rehabilitating them, or would they never be able to be rebuilt?
Well, I think first of all, this is an issue that has really come up very recently related to the flooding coming down in the Zer River. So we're concerned about that here in Kansas City. I know Lynn Jenkins, Congressman for the Second District, has been up farther north in Matson and areas like that as we're watching this flooding issue. And the real question that's sort of arisen is, is what could have been done earlier with the huge snowfalls that might have prevented this from happening? And certainly, the whole point about flooding is, it's unpredictable. You know, you don't know that you're gonna have a huge rainy month. And so the expectation is the Corps sort of tries to prepare for these really scenarios. What would happen if we had really rainy April and May? And we didn't run down some of the snowfall earlier, get that through the system? And so I think there are many questions arising, whether some of this could have been avoided with prior decisions made earlier in the year that maybe were not done because their prediction wasn't we're gonna have this much rain. It's gonna require some infrastructure expenses on behalf of the federal government, which further taxes are already overtaxed budget. We're gonna have to rebuild some of these portions. It's been kind of interesting, we have a few folks on the Appropriations Committee from Montana and areas up north. The guy from Montana stood up the other day, and I think they just had one member, maybe two from Montana, and he said, I know for 10 years you've heard me on Appropriations complain about drought. Well, this year, we're gonna, I'm gonna complain about rain, too much rain. And that's kind of how it is sometimes, it's either feast or famine. And, but there're gonna have to be some changes made. I think we've learned something from this process that obviously, we're not properly managing. We don't have the right management, more of a power handling these floodwaters. So it is gonna be an emerging issue, I think, as we go through the summer, and Congress is gonna have to engage. This question, yes, Manny?
Hi. First of all, I think my answer's not only either, but that's what I don't forget.
Okay.
But I was born and raised Republican, and I do believe in that.
I'm sorry.
I was born and raised Republican. I was born and raised Republican, but I can't communicate quite this. Okay. But I watched President Bush and the Republican-controlled House and Senate in the 2000s. I saw they cut taxes for the wealthy, led us to two wars, squatted the budget surplus, borrowed money from China to finance the war. The national debt skyrocketed 75% to 80% during Bush's administration with Republican-controlled House and Senate. And we borrowed from China. The amount of budget, the amount of deficit, the amount of debt in foreign hands in 2001 was 25% and 66% by the time Bush and Republicans did not control the Houses anymore. So I'm not Republican anymore, I used to be. But now, the corporate taxes used to be 27% of total tax income, and now they're 8.9%. I hope you will increase corporate taxes to what it used to be in the 50s. And I understand from your office that you supported keeping the tax cuts for the wealthy, the Bush, the Bush tax cuts. And there again, in the 90s, they didn't have the tax cuts. The economy was doing very well. I don't think we can argue that that's necessary. I also understand that you support the Ryan budget, which cut Medicaid for my younger siblings, Medicare for my younger siblings and my children. And I don't understand why we're protecting corporations and why we're protecting the very, very wealthy. You know, Warren Buffett pays 17%, and Secretary Fauci pays 30%. And at the same time, cutting Medicaid, cutting education, cutting these things that we need. There is a reason we have these safety nets. In the 1800s, we have open, vagrant children who roam in the streets. We tried organizing, we tried, there's a long history why we're here with these safety nets. And I don't think we should be protecting the corporations and the very wealthy for a little bit more taxes at the expense of Medicaid for the most vulnerable of our population. And you know, an effort is said, the corporations will lead the country if we have taxes. Do our corporations not care about America or Americans if they're willing to just broke the economy and throw Americans away to make their budget, to make their income?
Thank you for that question. And clearly, you've studied these issues, and I certainly appreciate. This is very important that I want for our country to have. There's a lot there to talk about, so I'll try to talk about some. And I'm sure that some of the other questions will come up. I don't get to every part of that question. I think a lot of Americans were frustrated that Republicans in the last decade were supposed to be the party, according to their own terms, right? The party of fiscal responsibility. And they were not necessarily as responsible as they could have been. And many in the party who believed that's why they were thrown out of the majority in 2006. They held the majority from 1994 to 2006. In the mid 90s, you had a Republican Congress and a Democratic President produce the only balanced budgets in many of our lifetimes. Now, for 1950 to 1994, you had always had a Democratic Congress, except for maybe one or two points in the Senate. But the House was Democrat for 40-some years. We ran deficits. And so I certainly am not gonna stand here and defend that one party or other party has been better over the course of history. What I'll say is, sometimes we get the best government when both parties have to hold each other accountable. And when you have one party running the entire city, whether it was the Democrats, and they did for the last two years, and it was one of the biggest landslide Republicans in history two years later, even after the President won. And so clearly, the country is divided on these issues, and they really don't want either party running up the tab. And they don't trust either party, most Americans. And so some people, I hear that, I don't hear a lot of people saying, you know, I jumped to the other party. I hear one people saying, I don't really trust either party when it comes to spending our money appropriately. The deficit in the last year of the Bush administration was $400 million. Inexcusable. The deficit today is $1.6 trillion. So the problems have gotten worse in the last two and a half years. And there's a variety of factors that lead to that. But certainly, I think that's one of the reasons the Republicans lost support. I think the majority of Americans want a party that can figure out how to balance budgets and do the right things and make tough decisions. And so you have a party that's focused very much on spending reductions, and you have a party that's focused on raising taxes to get to that point. And somewhere in the middle, maybe there's discussions that can be had. But what I'll say is that you've got to, you cannot, we cannot tax our way out of this deficit. There isn't enough money in the gross domestic product in the United States to run the government we're running at this size. There just isn't enough tax revenue. Assuming we were sitting down brokering this deal, and you said, let's at least raise taxes on the oil companies a little bit, let's at least raise taxes on the corporations a little bit, or let's let the tax cuts expire for the richest 1%. The proposal from the Obama administration on the oil companies that end some of the, quote, " that ends some of the "subsidies" or "tax deductions," it's a debatable description, right? Brings in about $2 billion a year. The letting the tax cuts expire on the upper one percent brings in about $60 billion a year. So if we were sitting down negotiating this deal, we've got $62 billion a year down the road, yet we're running a $1.6 trillion deficit. And so I think there has to be acknowledgement, though, that we are spending too much money, and many of these programs are too big. Now, the question is where we're spending the money? And that's a dilemma we have to have, because we don't know where we're spending the money. We can't talk about where to make the reductions, right? Majority of Americans believe we spend about twenty-five percent of our money on foreign aid. That that's where we spend a lot of our money. That's what the majority of Americans believe in. A majority of Americans in recent polling said that we should spend about ten percent of our money on foreign aid. If that's reasonable, ten percent of money, you know, help in Africa and starving children. In reality, the federal government spends about one percent of its money on foreign aid. Majority of Americans believe that if we cut fraud, waste, and abuse, and cut some defense spending, we would get there. The reality is, with the deficit we're running, you could eliminate the entire defense budget and the entire discretionary budget, all the education spending, all the transportation spending, all the agencies, all the Department of Energy, every federal department. You could eliminate all of it, and we'd still run a deficit. Because unfortunately, the spending on Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, interest and debt payments, and other mandatory programs actually puts us in a deficit before I even walk into the Appropriations Committee. So I think both parties need to be willing to sit down and give up things. I think Republicans need to be willing to make changes in defense spending and make reductions in that area. I think they need to be willing to do that. I think Republicans need to be willing to give up ag subsidies. And so I think if we have the sacred cow approach, we'll never get anywhere. Both sides need to sit down and be serious and talk about the issues. Certainly, I'm willing to do that, and I'm willing to have this dialogue, because we've got to solve these problems. It's too critical for us to sit in a camp, only argue my way on the highway because we're not going to get anything done. And certainly, appreciate the question and dialogue. And if there's follow-ups, happy to continue having a discussion. Yes, sir?
How you doing there? I don't need to answer.
Okay.
What I want to talk to you about is, Congressman, is about the, about these energy bills that have been coming out. Last time I was here, last time I was in public meetings, it was about H.R. 1229. It went up to Senate Bill, I think it was 593 or 953. And then when it got to the Senate, it was shot down, and we didn't have enough votes. Now, the one thing was, I was looking at ThomasLegislation.com about how the bill, you know, the text of the bill. The bill basically states that you want to release the moratorium that was set because of the BP was. And everything's on hold right now. What it is, is when I was looking at, you're talking about leasing the rights to oil. Don't tell us how much you're going, how much you're going to receive on these leases. You, one thing that I really want to see is another bill come up as basically called the American First package. Three things that, in our United States that we have as three tiers of our industry is energy, capital, and workforce. We've got a workforce because we're mostly unemployed right now. Our energy has been hot because nothing's going on with the Gulf. Just recently, Gulf Oil had found another reserve of oil and gas cells. They found, that might even be bigger than the horizon. What it comes down to is the reason why I want to say American First. I want to see in the bill, the bill that basically says that the people who get the leases are domestic, are the American people drilling. Also, I wanted to see if we have our refineries, we update it and we develop a process. And thus, the final thing is that the energy stakes in the United States does not get it. We do eighteen, we consume, and this is 2009 statistics, we consume eighteen-point-eight million barrels of oil a day. We produce nine-point-one billion barrels of oil a day. I mean, I looked at a lot of things, I've been studying this stuff. I mean, look at it this way, last time we brought up about a $3 gallon of gas back in 2008. Did you know that the commodities of that is almost forty percent? It's a dollar-ten is in the commodities because these guys are broke, they freak out because of export of oil that comes that we cannot receive due to blowing up entities, terrorism, and just the open restrictions. We're standing on half of our oil needs, our needs of half of there, and we're not even dealing with countries that actually have the other half, which is Russia. Russia basically is ninety-point-one million barrels a day that they produce, and they only consume two-point-four million barrels for their own use. And they still have seven-point-two or something like that million barrels of oil. And we're not, we're talking, we're talking to people who hate us, that don't want to deal with us and that want to hobble us from doing what we need to get back to work. That first part of the three-tier program of energy, we're destroying ourselves right here and now. There's no legislation that says that we're going, that the leases that are there.
It's going to be American.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, thank you, thank you for the question, certainly. Yeah, well, I appreciate the question. Certainly, the energy issues are not only important to the cost that average Americans have to deal with, their heating and fuel, and their gas in their vehicle, you know, with gas making $3.50 to $4. It's forefront of a lot of folks' minds, it affects decisions they all make. It's a strategic decision, as you pointed out, we're buying oil from people who then can fund activities against our own national interests with it, right? We don't want to do that. And so, and it's a job issue in the United States. We're not seeking for domestic sources of energy of all types. We're talking about oil, but all types of energy, that's a jobs issue. So I don't particularly know the answer regarding requirements on what types of business you have to be, can international companies, obviously BP is an international company. Obviously, businesses are pretty fluid. Businesses can set up in the United States and be an American company. So it would be interesting how you would close that off to others outside the United States. But I certainly see the point you're driving at there.
But the thing is, that oil off the coast of the Gulf of Mexico, you own inside the United States, that is the United States federal property, our land, that you are, you are basically, you know, overseers of it.
Sure.
And you're leasing it to people who comes work.
Right. Well, I think it's an issue that I need to study further. Yeah.
I don't see something like that.
Okay. Right. They didn't go far enough. They didn't go far enough. Okay, great. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I have a question about the cash of Obamacare.
Okay.
I understand that the federal government has sent millions of dollars to the states to start setting up these changes, studies how they're going to do it. There are a couple of states that actually sent it back, which I'm glad that they did. My question has to do a lot with the constitutionality of it. And if it is found constitutional because of the individual mandate, what will happen to the healthcare systems? Are we going to go back to the way it was? Is there, there are certain parts of law that may continue to affect those? I've been reading this, it's called Bad Medicine, about a Cato institute thing. It's pretty interesting. Another one on Homeland America, owned by a US contractor. And it seems that our finances obviously are going to be very difficult. I'm just wondering, how is this going to impact, you know, the finances of the country if it doesn't pay off?
Right. Well, the question of what happens if the Supreme Court, and this ultimately is going to go to the Supreme Court. It's been through several courts, they've had at least two judges now strike down portions of the healthcare law, and so it's going to go to the Supreme Court. They're going to have to roll particularly on the individual mandate. My understanding of the way the bill is written is that there's no sort of separability provisioned in the bill, which means if the individual mandate is striking down, the entire bill falls apart. And that's because the bill is partly made solvent by putting, by the lawmaking millions of Americans who could buy health insurance but choose not to or otherwise healthy, forcing them into the pools, therefore subsidizing the system. And that's sort of how it, partly that pays for itself. And so I think if you pull that out, the bill crumbles under itself. I don't think the bill could continue this, even if the court did strike it down. I don't, I think the Congress would have to completely redo the bill. And so that's obviously out of our hands. We had, there's twenty-eight states maybe that have sued on that, so a majority of states have sued on that. The House in January voted to repeal the bill outright and start fresh. I really believe that in order to have real healthcare reform in this country, both parties are going to have to have a seat at the table. And in that reform, it was only one party. We talked about earlier what happens when only one party makes the law, tends to alienate some of the other good ideas that are on the table. And so I think that in that situation, that there is an opportunity. The president even, this wasn't actually even the bill the president wanted. I mean, the president campaigned, in his campaign for president, against the individual mandate. That's what Hillary Clinton had. And there's even, you know, in 2008, they're saying, what are we going to do? Force poor people who don't have the money already to just go buy insurance when they don't have it? You know, and so this was a bill that essentially got passed because Scott Brown won the Senate race in Massachusetts, which forced the House to just adopt the Senate bill because the Senate didn't have the votes to go pass a new bill. And so I don't think anyone sat down and said this was the perfect bill. And my hope is that we can open it back up and go through and do additional reform. It's not going to be repealed with Hillary being the majority leader of the Senate, President Obama in the presidency. So folks here who want repeal, that just, you can't do that given the way things are. And folks here who really like it are going to have to realize that there are going to have to be some changes to the bill, and hopefully that the folks can sit down and make some changes. But ultimately, many people believe, Dr. Chirri, many folks believe that that's going to dramatically drive up costs of insurance, that merely passing the cost on to somebody else doesn't get at the root cost. We're not actually getting at the cost drivers that make insurance and make healthcare so expensive in this country. It's this one segment of our economy that tends to be immune from normal efficiencies and economic changes, you know? You can look at all sorts of examples, whether it's a car or a television, whatever. As technology improves, usually things get cheaper. But some of this technology that's been around goes up, the longer it's around. It actually inflates. And so clearly, the policies of this country aren't working when it comes to reducing healthcare costs. And many of us believe that it's going to get worse under the new proposal as we move towards more of a government-run system.
When do you think the budget is going to be for, how long, I expect?
I don't know the answer to that question. I, you know, I don't actually. I've heard some folks say within the next year. And it takes a while, but they could move it quick if they wanted to. I mean, sometimes the court system moves pretty slow, but we saw in presidential races and things, if they got to move, they got to move. So the challenging thing about this whole process is, whether you like that bill or not, it is not a very stable set of policies that help entrepreneurs and business owners know what the rules of the game are. So if you don't know whether that's going to be the law of the land in a year, and you don't know what the cost of hiring people is, you don't know what the bottom line is for your business, you're probably going to do what a lot of the small businesses are doing in this country right now. You're not going to hire anybody because you don't want to take the risk because you don't know what's going to happen. And so everybody's just saying, "Well, Washington's changing so many rules right now, with the healthcare bill, with Frank, and with all these new things, that I'm just going to sit in the sidelines until things stabilize." And so unfortunately, until we get this issue settled and get a set of policies to go forward, it's going to be, I think, a slowing effect on the economy just by the uncertainty of it all. So, there you go. Yes?
On that same subject, Congressman, could you give impressions on what happened that the judge who said it wasn't constitutional, what was his name, Biden? And he gave the president two weeks, a month, or whatever, two months? I don't remember what happened about that. But when the judge says it wasn't constitutional, wasn't everything supposed to stop then?
I believe, and I'm not studying that case extremely closely, but I believe that the request was an injunction against implementation of the act. But I can, for certain, that's my recollection of it. And the administration essentially said, "Well, that's not going to happen." It sort of goes back to what's happened about the issue of this country. Well, the courts can make their orders, you know, the presidents, the issues, they will, you know, go try to enforce them. And so I don't think, I think they've essentially not acknowledged that. There are other things right now in the administration as well that the courts are going through. The administration said they're not going to defend the DOMA bill as one. The administration just said that we're just not going to defend American. They just said, "We're not going to defend that." And so there are laws that happen that the executive branch, and it's not just this president, in the past, has sort of ignored.
So who would enforce it then? I mean, what do you, we say?
Well, the executive branch has the job to enforce the laws. That's why they tend to sometimes opt out of some of the enforcements on themselves.
So when he says, "Right, enforce it," that's not his legitimate statement because he's the enforcer, right?
That's what's sort of confusing about it. Yeah. So. You have all, Jean, I'm going to be next.
About, who asked about the war powers thing right now?
Sure.
Is this just another thing that he's ignoring? Or what's happening with this fourth war, like a third war? I mean, how much can he do on his own?
Well, the House is very concerned. The House is very concerned about this because essentially, the War Powers Act allows the president to respond when we're attacked or when the national interests are directly at stake. But it doesn't allow a war of choice. And so in this situation, I think Congress is very upset because, you know, the president essentially got approval from NATO to move forward. They waited for a NATO resolution, but not for any sort of congressional resolution. So you have both parties, from Dennis Kucinich, you know, although we're the most conservative folks for change, sort of standing arm to arm, saying, "First of all, we can't afford this. Second of all, we have to explain those to mission. Third of all, we don't want ground troops on the ground in Libya. We need to guarantee that, support the legislation to ensure that there's no ground troops in Libya."
Do you think there are ground troops in Libya?
No, I don't believe there are. But I believe that if your attempt is to try to remove Al-Marqadafi, that we could get into an attractive situation again. And so, you know, with the Iraq, Afghanistan, obviously, those were, Congress had to approve those. Even Dennis Kucinich, to this day, I give Bush credit at least, with his words that I didn't, that Kucinich says, "I didn't agree with him, but at least he sought approval first."
Kevin, who's in Dennis Kucinich's?
Everybody knows who Dennis Kucinich is. He was a Democratic candidate for president of Ohio, who interestingly...
Congressman?
Yeah, Congressman, I'm sorry. Yeah, he's a Congressman, he's one of my colleagues. I actually sat in the chair one time for an hour in an hour speech where it was just Dennis and I, the two people on the floor. I was in the chair, and he was speaking. So you'd love a lot of that guy who's been in our... And interestingly about Dennis, who's a very, very nice guy, he works alongside the highest office person. He, due to redistricting, is going to lose his district in Ohio. And so he is actually shopping the country for a district. He's been to Washington, he's been to different areas. So, hey, maybe he'll come here. Maybe he'll come here, right? Okay. Jean, my former colleague, you know, he's here.
Thank you, Kevin. I wanted to talk about Medicare for a minute because I know you voted for the Ryan plan to basically end Medicare as we know it. And I wanted to get some facts out there because I think some of the rationale that was advanced by you and others is that it's bankrupt and that sort of thing. In reality, the trustees report that just came out a few weeks ago, the Medicare trustees report, said that in 2024, thirteen years from now, with no changes, there would still be ninety percent of full funding for Part A hospitals. Part B is fully funded every year, and so is Part D, which is the prescription drug benefits. Part B is the physician payments. Those are already fully funded. Even thirteen years from now, Part A will be ninety percent fully funded by ongoing revenue, incoming revenue. So the rationale that it's going to be bankrupt, I think, is mistaken. And I think in addition, it has that really kind of cynical provision that pits seniors against their children and grandchildren, delaying the total destruction of Medicare as we know it until, you know, fifteen years from now or whatever. And so I'm wondering if, given those facts, you would reconsider your vote for that Ryan budget to what I consider destroy Medicare?
Well, Jean, I appreciate the comment and the quote, "End Medicare as we know it." It gets said on the floor every day. Vital benefits become a very, very politically charged, demagoguery sort of situation. It's unfortunate because I saw a sign the other day that the left was taking to the floor in the Senate that said two things on it. One, Republican plan, is what it said, number one. End Medicare as we know it, number two, more tax cuts for managers. And so we've gotten a situation where we can't have an intelligent plan. And I appreciate you bringing facts to the table. And so the right feels very strongly that the status quo will end Medicare as we know it. And the left feels that the rights change is when end Medicare as we know it. Well, all of that is essentially scares seniors. It doesn't have a serious dialogue. The plan that was put forward, that I supported, the path to prosperity, as it was called, keeps Medicare exactly the same way for those 55 and older, other than changes that are made from repealing parts of Obamacare, okay? Keeps Medicare exactly the same, other than the new provisions that were put forward that may be changed by a court case anyway. Keeps it exactly the same. It also does repeal Obamacare and makes other changes. And it cuts six trillion, six trillion dollars from the deficit over the next ten years. The status quo, this country goes bankrupt. In fact, the modeling that the Congressional Budget Office utilizes shows that in about 2030, because of the cost of three programs, Medicare, Medicaid, and Social Security, all those three programs take up every dollar that we bring in in this country under historic tax rates. under historic tax rates, and you can raise or lower federal taxes, you can have it, but you can go back for decades, and we're bringing in about the same percentage in the economy. Because you can't, you can only tax so much, you begin to hear job growth, you begin to hurt the total amount of money you're coming in, sorry, I can call you, I'm delivering. It brings in that, you can only bring in a certain amount of money out of the private sector, and so the economy goes bankrupt. I hope everyone does read the trustees report, because the trustees report and the Congressional Budget Office say that because of the amount of seniors going into Medicare, and because of the uncontrolled costs in healthcare, the uncontrolled costs in healthcare, all of the system, including through Medicare, that the system becomes unaffordable and goes bankrupt. And so, and so, what I would like to do, and Jean, I can read the point.
Ninety percent fully funded.
And I can give the mic, but if somebody responds, so if you let me explain my answer, that's what you asked for, right, Jean?
Yeah.
You want me to explain it?
If you would change your vote.
Thank you, Jean. So, I'm gonna explain my answer, talk afterwards behind. So, the proposal itself, the principles are preserve Medicare, that's principle number one. So, the folks that are gonna end Medicare as we know it, that's what we like to call politics, okay? First of all, preserve Medicare as we know it. The second thing is preserve Medicare exactly the way it was before the Obama healthcare bill for those fifty five and older. For folks who are in their twenties and thirties and forties, the statistics show Congressional Budget Office and the trustees office, that the budget is going to go bankrupt unless we control the costs on the entitlement side of spending. So, we can debate about it, we're entitled to different opinion, we're not entitled to different facts. Jean, if you want to sit down and have, we can have an hour long meeting, you and I can go over, and I know you're a smart guy, you and I served in the legislature together, you were on the left, I was on the right, you have a kid passionately for higher taxes and greater state government, I have a kid passionately to keep taxes low. We've had these debates before, we're gonna keep having them, okay? Jean, we've had these debates, and we can keep doing it. But the point is, is that this is a very, very serious debate, we're not entitled to different facts, and the facts are, this is gonna go bankrupt, and I wanna fight to preserve it.
When, man? You say that, but when? He told you when.
He said it's never gonna go bankrupt.
No, I said it's gonna be ninety percent fully funded in twenty twenty four, I think seventy eight percent funded. And then in twenty eighty, it's eighty eight percent funded, if nothing is.
In actuality, what's happened is, in actuality, what's happened is because those numbers are not necessarily accurate, what's happened is the president's now required, under federal law, to put together a proposal to fix Medicare. The trigger's been enacted now for three years, and so it goes back to what this lady was asking, you almost saying earlier, is that the president's ignoring the requirements under Medicare's own law, the trigger that requires you to put together a proposal to make modifications to Medicare. Now, the reason there may be reductions to save Medicare is, under the last proposal, they created a fifteen person panel advisory board called the IPAD, and the IPAD has the authority to, as fifteen unelected bureaucrats who don't have to be from the healthcare sector, don't have to understand healthcare policy, they have the authority to make reductions and to ration care, and they have the authority to cram down the cost of what we're gonna pay an already overtaxed set of doctors and folks in this country where we have doctor shortages. So, yes, Jean, you can avoid Medicare being bankrupt under the left's plan, if you enact the proposals that are under the Obama healthcare bill that uses the IPAD to ration care to seniors. So, I don't believe that's the correct way to go. There's not money in the system.
If you don't do anything.
If you don't do anything, the system will fail. If you use the president's plan, it's under law.
When?
It's under law, well, there's different numbers out there.
What's your opinion on when?
There's different, I'm reminded of the numbers from the Congressional Budget Office and the trustees office.
And that would be?
The numbers in the trustees and the Congress office.
What should that be?
Well, the trustees say that the system goes bankrupt in eight to fourteen years, the Congressional Budget Office says the same thing, the Congressional Budget Office shows that in about twenty thirty, the system breaks down, and the computer breaks down, we can't even afford the level of services. So, I want to preserve it. What I wanna do is rather than me respond to questions, and three or four folks, five folks shout at me and say when, and I wanna sit down and have intelligent dialogue, so I'd be happy if folks that want to sit down, because I'm not married specifically to this proposal. What I'm married to is preserving Medicare for future generations and balancing the budget. And if their idea's on the left, I'll support those ideas, and if their idea's on the right, I'll support their argument. And so, we might work together, get somewhere, okay? Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that I think, just for anyone who cares, repealing the bottomed care or repealing the Affordable Care Act would be a mistake. I think that the Affordable Healthcare Act has really been a milestone in the past several years, but, back to what I was gonna say is, I am a retired federal employee, and on behalf of, on behalf of many other federal employees in this area, I would like to urge that the retirement system and the benefits for them not be radically changed. Over the past thirty years, government has been a bad word, and that's kind of filtered on down to the people who work in the government. But, for example, government workers are involved, and looking at the food we eat, the water we drink, the air we breathe, so, when we talk about getting rid of government, you gotta keep that in mind. And yet, according to recent reports, the federal retirement system has emerged as a key target in negotiations about our national debt. It's not right, and we need you, Congressman York, to stand up in our defense, please formulate Congress whether penalize those that gave their professional careers serving their country.
Well, sir, let me thank you for your service, Phil, and what were you, what'd you do?
With the VA.
The VA, great, and they do some great, great service for our earnings, so, and our military personnel, so thank you for your service. I certainly respect you and the million federal employees that we have that do work behalf of the federal government, and my concern is, and the concern of a lot of Americans, is that we're borrowing so much money that we can't afford all the government that maybe everybody wants. And so, that can sometimes translate into a, we don't care about the work that federal employees do, who may even work very hard, and so I don't want that to translate into a disrespect for that. What I want us to do is figure out a dialogue on how we can make government more efficient, and that maybe we have to do with less folks going forward, we may not be able to continue to hire as many people. You know, small businesses, businesses across the country, and all of us, sometimes when we don't have the resources, we gotta cut back. And so, that means we can't keep as many employees maybe as we always had, just because we can't afford it. And so, but don't translate that to a lack of respect. I think many in Congress on both sides of the aisle greatly respect the work our civil servants do, both on the military and the civilian side. Thank you for your service, Phil.
But that's the way it's.
That's the way it comes along, yeah.
That's the way it's coming down. And I really think that you need to look at the tax structure for the tax breaks for the top one or two percent, that I don't think they'll pay their fair share over the last, over the last several years.
Great, sir, thank you. Sir, I told you I was gonna come back to you there, to thank.
You call Social Security an entitlement, you call it an entitlement. Back before you were born, we thought there was not money going, it was in trust fund. Well, back under Lyndon Johnson, he stole that money, and they could steal it ever since. So, it's not an entitlement.
Sure.
The government owes, in short form, they gotta pay. If all that money was in the system, the system would be self-sustaining, it would have never failed.
Well, and I.
You gotta do something, you can't, all you people in Washington call this an entitlement, it's not. You stole our money. The people who save in your jobs.
Right.
Another thing I want to bring up is the healthcare and all the perks that you get by these billion dollar gyms you got in Washington, that's the thing that just came out yesterday. It seems like all the five hundred and fifty five people that are currently in office not telling all the retiring, retired senators and congressmen that got better than we'll ever have, and we gotta do something about taking, maybe we gotta vote on it, the people voted, and take your benefits away from us, because you won't vote yourselves.
Okay. Well, sir, thank you for your, for your comment. I think a lot of folks realize that entitlement's maybe a terminology that's used, mandatory spending is kind of the phrase I try to use, but it's what's in law, it's not appropriated. So, we don't even appropriate the Social Security budget, we don't appropriate the Medicare budget, it's in law what the standards are, and I think, just like Medicare, Social Security is a pack we have with seniors, they pay into the system, and they deserve the benefits that were promised to them under law. And so, I certainly get very concerned when the dialogue turns against either party, the either party's trying to eliminate or destroy these programs. I want to assure you that both, far and wide open, both parties are committed to retaining them. The challenge we get into is because the system was set up in a way in which there were a lot of workers and payees into the system, when you were working, sir, you were paying, and there weren't that many people on the system. But now, we've got about ten thousand retirees every day in this country that retire, ten thousand seniors retire, yet we only created fifty three thousand jobs, so, you know, we don't have as many people getting into the workforce to take care of it. So, it's becoming a math question, a math problem, as there aren't enough benefits in the system, but I do agree, for too long, they haven't kept Social Security as a separate fund and a separate trust, which is a problem, and going forward, the, going forward, the math is an issue, that's why Congress is taking a look at these things, because we just have so many more seniors now, our society's getting older, and immigration frankly could fix part of this problem. If we had immigration reform, we brought in workers who all properly paid taxes, who were all here under a good system, we have to have new workers, we gotta have new energy in order to pay the taxes to make sure we keep our trust to seniors, so I think that's definitely part of the scenario as well. And anything Congress can do, I'm happy to give out certain benefits. I think some of those things that were, I think, Congress used to not pay Social Security taxes, I mean, they had a lot of whole set of perks for themselves that were frankly inappropriate. I don't think they should be treated any differently than other federal employees are treated, folks who are working for the federal government, I don't think they should get any special benefits, and to the extent that we can root out what's remaining of that, we should, I understand. Six months ago, sir, I was sitting where you are, and had the same frustrations of what Congress says. On the gym, it's my understanding, just reading the article because of the pictures that have been coming out of the gym, that it's self-sustaining based upon the dues that are paid essentially, but, but we can, we can get you, if you leave your immigration, I will get you a direct answer on that. I don't want to misstate on that, but that's what I thought I read yesterday, with the pay dues, et cetera, for that. So, hey, at this point, we've wrapped up our tie. Thank you all for coming. Again, many of you are frequent flyers, we're gonna get you a punch card, so you can get a free slurpee after we hit ten of these, but thanks again for just getting one of these, I'll be around if folks have questions, and I appreciate the dialogue, thank you very much. [applause]